Very good. Well, then let's call this meeting to order. It is June 20th, the day after Juneteenth, seven-ish. And let's all rise and join me for the flag salute. There she is. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you all. All right, next up is roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Murray?
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Attending remotely.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Here, attending remotely via teleconference.
Mayor Pro Tem Wall?
Here, attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
Attending remotely via teleconference.
All right, very good. Thank you all. City manager, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
There are no late changes.
Very good. Moving on to public comment. Is anybody signed up for public comment or did anybody sign up online?
Jennifer? Yep, I had to get the signup sheet.
Oh.
Jeez, give me a second.
Sorry, sorry.
No one signed up in person, no one pre-registered for online, and no written comments were submitted.
Okay, then moving on from public comment, we go to the consent calendar. We have items A and B. Does anybody wish to remove any of the items? Seeing nothing, they'll go ahead and I'll consider a motion to approve the consent calendar. Anyone?
Move to... Oh, do we have... Oh, where are you going, Laura? Okay. Move to approve the consent calendar A and B.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor of the consent calendar as presented?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, very good. Moving on to the proclamation for the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group recognition. Councilmember Woodard? As our liaison, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and yesterday I made a joke about social distancing that seems to apply here as well. So thank you for everybody who's able to join us remotely. What a wonderful reminder of the technology that we have at our capacity. So do I have any of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group members who would like to join me? I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but you're welcome to join me here at the podium. Anybody, any takers? Technically, I had a liaison, if you wanted to join as a liaison as well. So I'm going to read the proclamation, but really, you can never stop me, but since only Councilmember Ryan's here and he's going to let me talk as long as I want, I just want to first personally say what an honor it has been. And I also want to pause and say, I also think as elected, it's in our interest sometimes to acknowledge when we have to eat crow, which is, if you go back in the records, which I always encourage anyone to do, that's the beauty of the technology. You can just go back and hear what we have to say. You don't have to be constricted to write up or hearsay. You can just go and literally hear what we say, but you'll hear that. I had concerns about the makeup of the group specifically in terms of, did it represent Mount Lake Terrace? And I just want to go on record as saying, I absolutely go on record as saying this group represented not only Mount Lake Terrace, they represented Snohomish County, they represented their families, and they represented the future in terms of thinking about their own personal loss or gain, depending on the conversations that we were having. These were very hard conversations to have because you are genuinely talking about what will the future look like, and you may or may not be in it. And that's not a negative because all of that is part of the legacy and I would argue, everybody on this committee took that to heart. We'll meet again as a group, so don't take it as, hey, there's only two of you here and two of your liaisons. No, it's just we're very busy people, which is another acknowledgement of thank you for your time, energy, and investment in this community. That said, that's probably all embedded in this proclamation, but nobody was here to stop me, so here I go. Recognition of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. Whereas the city of Mount Lake Terrace is updating its comprehensive plan to guide growth and public policy in the city for the next 20 years, specifically 2024 to 2044, and whereas the plan will chart the city's future and set goals and policies for implementing the vision informed by robust community engagement, and whereas a Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group, or CPAG, was formed and appointed by the city council, made up by community members and interested parties to participate in the planning process and provide diverse community perspectives to help inform the development of the Comprehensive Plan update, and whereas CPAG members met monthly since September 2023 to learn about the Comprehensive Plan and develop recommendations to the Planning Commission and city staff about the Comprehensive Plan vision, goals, and policies, and whereas the CPAG served as liaisons to the broader community, reaching out to the people they know and interacting with them, then bringing their perspective back to the planning process, and whereas the city council fully appreciates the time, resources, and thoughtful recommendations of the CPAG, as well as their outreach into the community to share engagement opportunities and explain the Comprehensive Plan to others, and now therefore, our mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright and on behalf of the city council do hereby proclaim sincere gratitude for the service of these community members and recognition of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group, signed by the mayor this 20th day of June 2024 at the city of Mount Lake Terrace, state of Washington, and the witness whereof and seal and signatures of this city are affixed. Yeah, I'll have that to you. Thank you, sir. If you'd like to say any words, you can. Okay, no words. We're going to do a quick photo, though, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Oh, we'll do another one.
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, thank you all. I can't say on behalf of the council how much we appreciate the work that you guys have done. And we're, all of us that are not there in person are sorry. Many of us are at Association of Washington City's conference and doing great work on your behalf, working with the association, statewide association, and learning lots of great things, which I'm sure you'll hear about during our liaison reports. But really do want to let you know how much we appreciate the work that you've put into, you know, do the heavy lifting before bringing it to Planning Commission and the council for consideration later this summer and fall. So again, thank you all. And with that, unless there's any further comments, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing and vote on the six-year Transportation Improvement Program with city engineer Rich Meredith. Rich?
Good evening, everybody. Last week, I presented our six-year tip. And the six-year tip is really a minor refresh from what we presented back in February. We need to adopt a tip for next year so we can meet some reporting guidelines by the state. We haven't really made any changes to the projects, but we have updated some of the project descriptions. And I can share my screen here. I hate it when that happens. There we go. This is the Exhibit A that has the funding and a list of the projects on it. So what we've done for this refresh is we've added the 2030 column and our estimate on what projects would be built in 2030 and some estimated cost. One thing I wanted to mention is that this list is, it's something that we can update on an annual basis. And we expect to be revisiting all these projects as we continue to move forward with our comp plans and our transportation master plan. There's a lot of factors that we use when we're trying to decide the projects that'll be on here. You know, safety is always one. We like to review collision histories and volumes. But the planning efforts that we're going through, that gives us a lot of the data that we need to help also decide what project should be on here. We like to include the equity analysis. We're evaluating these on an equitable basis so that that can be a factor. And we're also looking, I guess primarily sometimes, at the different funding opportunities. So the projects that you see on the list aren't necessarily ranked in a specific order other than which ones we've kind of guessed would be the ones we want to focus on first and the ones we want to focus on over the next six years. Should funding opportunities present themselves that would allow us to move a project forward or delay a project, those are all things that we take into consideration on which projects are on the list and when we can get around to building them. So that sums up, I think, what we wanted to talk about there, so I'm available for questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. One of the things I want to bring up, and as a council member, one of our greatest duties is making sure that our residents don't have to pay too much for things. I know that's the number one thing that is very important to me because when we look at being a council member, one of the things that our residents wants to know are, what are you doing for me? And one of the things I'd like to do for them is to ensure that we are looking at the impacts to light rail, and I brought that up, this is probably my sixth time, of what's going to happen there. And then listening to Seattle and all about their unsafe roads. They just had, I think it was, five people or seven people die within a week. And so they're looking at putting out something to homeowners to raise taxes. I think it was between $400 and $600 a year to look at studies on how to make the roads safer. And so that's one of the things you were just talking about is safety. And I just want to make sure that we're looking at the impacts to our density and making sure our roads are keeping safe as well as the impacts to light rail and what impacts that will cause. But moreover, and you said it too, and I just want to reiterate it, is looking for grants and things so that when we are rebuilding, our residents aren't coming to us and saying, why are you raising our taxes because of the roads? And hopefully, most of that construction will pay for that, but, you know, some of it won't. But I just don't want to be in the same boat as Seattle, looking at our residents and having to raise taxes like that. So I just want to put it out there is that another thing is just to keep a light rail, maybe project, somewhere in our limelight of understanding the impacts that are going to be coming to us. Just being ahead of the game and realizing, you know, after talking about 48th and some of our other main roads, like 212th, and we've been talking about getting light there, I know it's a little bit off the topic, but since we're talking about transportation, I just wanted to bring that up. Back to you, Brian.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It looks like most everything is just kind of wordsmithing everything, making things work on this. My question, and this probably won't be for you, this might be for the city manager. Number two on the individual projects for 2025. Of course, we have the Main Street Revitalization Phase Two. But number two is the Main Street Revitalization Phase Three. The design is to start somewhere in 2024. I have a couple of questions. Might be more than two. Will the design come from the grant we've got for Phase Two? And then, when it says the design's in 2024, which is this year, and completion by 2027? So that's three years. But I'd like to know, you were mentioning that some of these items could be updated on an annual basis. So then my next question, this would be also probably for the city manager. If we wanted to update Phase Three, what's the procedure for that? So those are two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Go ahead. Jeff, Rich?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can answer those if you want, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, Rich, go ahead.
Okay, so the Phase Three of the Main Street project? Phase Three of the Main Street project? We're anticipating kicking off the conceptual design process here in July, next month. We anticipate some public outreach in the September-ish range. The idea is that we want to get our data together before we start going out and conducting some of the outreach just so we have some bookends to tell people. The whole vision of Phase Three was laid out in the Town Center Plan. And so what we are envisioning for our project right now is to simply reintroduce the project to the public. And there's been, you know, people move on and there's been some different faces around. So we want to make sure that the vision is still what people want to see. And understanding that right now it's just a line on a map and there's no boundaries, no right of way, nothing's been decided. So this is the perfect time to both get some idea of what those boundaries should be and definitely get the local residents and our city behind whatever design we come up with. So we've, as part of our Phase Two design team, they've engaged tool engineering to help us with the urban design aspects of that. And I'm really looking forward, it should be an exciting time to try to see some different comments, some different concepts, and then try to figure out what's going to be the one that best fits our vision. So that is why it's going to start in July and it'll probably go through the end of the year, if not more. And with 500,000 that we've already allocated to that, this is coming out of the budget that was approved for the Phase Two. It was a combination of Phase Two and Phase Three. We wanted to get to about a 10% engineering level design. And as part of our RACE grant application, we also asked for some more money to help us further that design. The idea is that if we can come up with a 30% design, that would help us answer questions from developers as they start to acquire more properties and plan developments. Part of the unknown is a risk that they haven't been willing to take yet. And so the more we can define where we're really looking for the road to be and what it would look like, I think the more developable the Town Center project would be.
Good. Thank you, Rich. Jeff, anything?
Continuing. Continuing. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Where does the... I'm sorry, you're kind of delayed. Did you say continue?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, we have the Phase Two grant, which we're working to get everything together up and down 56th by December so we can continue with the extension of the $5 million grant. Would any of that be used at all for Phase Three?
The $5 million TIB grant is earmarked for Phase Two. And if we are unable to get the RACE grant, then that $5 million TIB grant could go away. So we haven't relied on any of that money for Phase Three.
So if we get the RACE grant, which is after the TIB grant, we could lose the TIB grant?
Well, what I've been told by the TIB staff is that if we are successful with the RACE grant, then if by chance we aren't able to wrap everything up by December, we'll have to go in person and talk to their board. But if they see that we have all the funds except for their portion of it, that it shows that we're making progress and that we're ready to go build something and that there's a higher likelihood that we could still get an extension on that. So it's all predicated on us getting as much of that design done and being ready to go by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. That's important. I have many constituents listening in this evening, and they're very anxious on this. Okay, so then the city manager, what would be the process for changing Phase Three design? Thank you.
So the process for changing Phase Three, if that was the direction the council would want to go, first, we're looking at finishing the Transportation Management Plan, the TMP, which council authorized with ARPA dollars last year, middle of last year. Once that's completed, we'll look at what the overall city's needs are and then we can come back after public input and comment. Like Rich mentioned, we want to put bookends on either side of the potential design so we can actually share information with people rather than just soliciting, you know, comment based on nothing, based on a line on a map, like he said. So we want to provide folks with that information and then have public comment on the different options and what we think and what council thinks would fit best with your vision for the town center. So there will be opportunities to have comments on what that eventually the street looks like. There'll be several opportunities of areas where people can participate in that discussion before anything gets built or acquired.
Thank you. And continuing on?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. If we have a lot of public comment on that, Phase Three, and it's brought to the council's attention, this is something we could have a discussion with, and is it something we could vote to pause or redesign?
Sure you could. So the council always has authority to do that. What we want to do, as Rich mentioned, that will, the effort on Phase Three will start in July and we will have early and continuous conversations with interested parties and property owners about what that process looks like and how they can be involved. We intend to do that early and often to make sure that everybody is aware of what's happening or make as sure as we can that everybody is aware of what's happening. And the timeline.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any further questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Councilmember Sonmore?
Move to open public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of opening a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is open. Jennifer, do we have anybody in the audience, anybody signed up or in the audience or otherwise to provide testimony on this motion?
There were no in-person signups, pre-registrations for online comment, or written comments received on this matter.
Very good. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify?
No.
All right. With nobody testifying, I will consider a motion to close the public hearing. Councilmember Sonmore?
Move to close public hearing, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion is, motion is approved. We've closed the public hearing. Now we will consider the motion. Do we have a motion to adopt the 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program ordinance? Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. Move to adopt the 2025, 2025, 2030 Transportation Improvement Plan, otherwise known as TIP ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. Before voting, do we have any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the 2025, 23, sorry, 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program TIP ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you all. Very good. We are moving on to the public hearing and vote on ordinance for adopting the Engineering Development Manual with city engineer Rich Meredith and Community Economic Development Director Kristy Osborne. Take it away, Rich.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen again. Share screen. Yep. There we go. Okay. This is to talk about our Engineering Development Manual, which I presented an overview of last week. And then since then, I have added the proposed code revisions. So I thought I would go over some of the highlights from the code revisions. So tonight's the 20th. The purpose of our meeting is, again, this is the public hearing to review the code revisions that are associated with the Engineering Development Manual. You'll hear me refer to it as the EDM often because it's easier to say. Part of the purpose of us revising or developing an Engineering Development Manual is to consolidate our design standards in a central location. We've got a lot of inconsistencies because of the different locations where standards can be found. They're found in comp plans, they're found in our code, they're found in our design details. And so we wanted to standardize that to reduce the inconsistencies and make it easier to update it in the future. Having all the design details in central locations makes it easier and clearer for the developers and their designers and the staff to understand what the different design parameters are. It's also going to streamline the design and the plan review process, which will help improve permitting for developments and reduce their costs at the same time. So just a little bit of background here. Again, as I was talking about, we have standards scattered in different places. We have, we found a number of inconsistencies. The last time the details were updated was in February of 2022. The town center plan was last updated in 2019. The current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015 and the last amendment to the comp plan was 2019. The last transportation plan update was 2020. So as you can see, it's been a period of time with all of those that we haven't really changed or reviewed or updated any of our standards. And it so happens that we're in the process of updating our comprehensive master plan. We're updating our transportation plan. You know, this, this is a good time to develop an Engineering Development Manual because with all the changes that are happening to the other codes and the, and the comp plans, it all fits together so that if we make changes in one place, we've got a place to park them. So the Planning Commission, I met with the Planning Commission six times. So I've got a listing of both when we introduced it, when we went through the different sections of the EDM. It's such a large manual that we kept it in a couple of sections, a meeting, just so that it was easier to go through. And then we had the public hearing on January 8th where the council or the Planning Commission voted to move the EDM to the city council and it was a unanimous vote. So the city council meetings, last Thursday, the 13th, I presented the Engineering Development Manual, which leads us to tonight's meeting where we're having the public hearing to review the EDM and the code revisions associated with it. So the EDM manual itself is, is designed so that it kind of walks an applicant through the whole process from permitting, the initial permitting, all the way through project closeout. The idea is that it can be a one-stop guide for them as they try to work their way through the, a project development process. Some of the subjects of interest that I mentioned last week was there's issues or there's criteria for parking and undergrounding of utilities that we've incorporated into the EDM. We've tried to clean up some of the inconsistencies with driveway accesses and sidewalks. We found some different minimum widths of sidewalks, so we tried to make those consistent. We've added some language on bike lanes and tried to make the lighting design criteria more consistent and tried to lay out some guidelines for traffic impact analysis that a lot of developments will have to produce as part of their project development. Under the code revisions, I highlighted a couple of the areas that we may want to talk about there. In the ordinance for, for section 13.05, most of those are fees that are in the current code that we were going to move to a fee schedule. 1620 is some more standards that are currently in our code that we can move it to the EDM. In 1950, we've proposed some changes to the on-street parking calculations. I'm going to bring up the exact changes so I can talk a little bit more about those. Same thing with 1950, we're, we, as we've been test-driving the town center design standards, we found a few areas that are a little inconsistent and this here should help clarify that for both staff and developers. 1995 had a lot of standards that we moved into the EDM, including some of the lighting standards. And then 19125 was some clarifications to our off-street parking standards. So I was going to bring up, I'm going to stop sharing for a second. In 1950, this one. That's not showing, is it? So in 1950, this is a part of our town center code. And this is an example of where we ran into some questions and we, by cleaning up this diagram, I think we can address that. I'm going to zoom in on this a little bit. All right. So in the current code, we've got lots of detail about pedestrian core streets and town center streets and access corridors, but we don't have information about the main street, primary streets. It says as designated, but it's not designated in the code. And so when you look at this diagram, the yellow, the horizontal yellow is 236th. The vertical yellow is 56th. So when it comes to some of the other cross-sections that are listed in the code, they don't include those streets. So what we've done is we've developed a street design matrix in the EDM that covers what we want these streets to look at so it'll hopefully eliminate some of the confusion when the developers are building on these adjacent frontages. One of the other confusing elements of this diagram is it actually spelled out in the diagram, you know, right-of-way widths and sidewalk widths. I, I'm proposing to delete all those and just talk about the type of street because we've got this information in other places and the more locations where you try to spell out specifics, the more confusion you can get. So so that was one diagram we were changing. Here's another diagram. This is our cross-section for a pedestrian core street. And some of the confusion that we've been having is the, in a cross-section, it makes sense to list what the curb-to-curb dimension should be, but it doesn't make sense to start listing out what lane widths and parking and things like that should be. In a design cross-section, striping and signing of where you're going to park or where you're not, those are all easily changed in the field. It's not something that you would necessarily assign in a code. So it makes more sense to have the roadway width specified, but not how it's allocated within there. So we were going to modify this cross-section in the code to get rid of the, some of the dimensions in here to make it more usable in the town center area. Every street is going to have some unique characteristics and it's hard to have one size fit all. Same thing with this figure. It's also a pedestrian core street. And, you know, what I've taken off of here is some parked cars and traffic because in some places we will have the parking, in some places we won't. So it's easier to start off with the 36th and not be having to overrule or override the dimensions of the lanes that are shown in here. This is the same thing for the town center streets. Again, we're trying to point out, here's something else that's been questioned many times is where do these measure? Should they go to the back of the curb? Should they go to the face of the curb? These type of information is really helpful for developers and eliminate any confusion when they have a proposal that they send to us. So we wanted to make changes to all those figures to reflect that. I think that's it for 1950. And then 19125.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Councilmember Somer, go ahead.
Just, if you could just be, you said the developers will need to know, but isn't the street just going to be what the street measurements are? Is there something that I just missed?
Well, the street dimensions, we have the existing right-of-way. But in our street matrix and in our design standards, we ask for some dedications of right-of-way to fit the vision. The curb-to-curb width stays about the same, but our vision for town center is wider sidewalks. The wider sidewalks are what we're expecting as we increase density and we need room for our pedestrians and active people to, to be more comfortable choosing to walk or ride instead of ride to bike or drive a car.
Oh, so I was just concentrating on the picture that you had up there. And I remember when we first did it, we've done it a couple of times. And so I, I get the, the, not putting the 17 feet, you know, per or whatever. So that's what I was concentrating on. And so maybe you'd already gone on to a different spot when you said the developers needed to know. And I just thought you were just talking about the, the street. So you can disregard the question. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Somer. Rich, go ahead.
So this is where, this is 19.125 where we have some more proposed changes. And they have to do with, are related to parking because we've heard some interest in trying to maintain parking as much as we can and also recognizing that we're going to need to take a hard look at how we use our streets. We've got needs for, for freight, we've got needs for bicycles, we've got needs for pedestrians, you know, and there's still the cars that drive out there. And so there's not enough room with all these competing needs to get everything that they want. So a lot of times we are trying to compromise the design to, to meet the, the needs, the best fit for that street. One of the things that we looked at with parking is that is there going to be enough parking off-site if there, if we're not going to be able to provide as much parking on the street? And so one of the thoughts that we had was, has to do with this parking requirement. And I think I can zoom in on this some more, too. The way the current code reads is that if, if your parking requirement is a fraction and the fraction is over 0.5, that you would round it up. Or if it's less than that, you would round it down. And there's some school of thought that says if it's any type of a fraction, you can't have 0.1 cars, so you would round it up. Or we could keep it the same as it currently is. So we were recommending to round it up to the next whole number to provide an extra parking space, but that is something that we can discuss.
Councilmember Somer?
I just wanted to say I like that rounding up because I know we're looking at a lot of what we can do for our developers, but I really want to look at what we're doing for our citizens. And I'm hearing a lot of complaints about parking already and, you know, we're just barely getting off the ground. And so I think rounding up is beneficial to our residents and to those, eventually to those businesses that come in. I know, I think we're looking at changing how we had the horizontal parking in downtown, but I just wanted to say if we need more conversation on that, I thought that was better to round up than to round down.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Somer. All right. Rich, carry on. Oh, I'm sorry. Payne Donovan has a question while we're on this topic. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate this, this conversation. I think it's, it's, you know, I certainly appreciate and have heard from our, our, you know, residents and neighbors, concerns about parking. And I think, you know, it's, if we're, if we are, we are building, you know, a transit-oriented community here in town center, it's important to think about the extra costs first that those parking stalls create and those, those get, you know, passed along in rent, whether it's residential or, or commercial. And then also, you know, just, you know, more, more parking spots lead to more cars, which leads to more traffic. And, and I think, you know, we're, you know, while we hear concerns about parking, also hear concerns about traffic, et cetera. And I think striking a balance there, especially if it's in the town center. You know, I look forward to, to having this conversation together again. So I just wanted to offer my, my thoughts there as well. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. All right. If not, if there's no further questions on this topic while we're on it.
Another.
Rich, let Rich carry on.
Another.
So somebody, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I, I really appreciate you working on this because we're getting things finalized in writing that, and the conflicting items we have here. But is it, besides putting together and consolidizing all this, are we changing anything? Because I'm hearing something different on the parking now. That's number one. So let's go with that one.
What's shown on the screen right now, the, the changing how parking spaces, the required parking spaces are calculated, that's a change. That's not just moving it to the EDM.
Okay, I'm going to also go back because we have our citizens listening and I want to confirm if they know what EDM is and that's Engineering Development Manual. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I'm not, you know, because we started a long time ago and sometimes we forget those acronyms. So would you say that statement one more time for me regarding the parking?
The, the calculation to determine the required number of parking spaces off-site, we're proposing a change round, to the rounding calculation as part of our code revisions, but it's not necessarily the standard that's being moved into the Engineering Development Manual.
Okay, could you tell me what it was and what it could be, will or will be after the vote? Thank you.
So the, what's shown in the Exhibit A of the proposed ordinance, it shows that we're striking out the words "any fraction up to and including point, 0.50 shall be disregarded" and fractions over 0.50 shall be an additional parking space. And we've proposed revising that to say "any fractional number of spaces, the required number of spaces shall be rounded up to the next number."
You know, I understand that, but I don't think there's a lot of people that understand that. Could you say that in layman's terms for our citizens tonight?
So for example, if we calculate how many parking spaces are required based on the land use, you can get fractional numbers when you do that. So if it's, say, 15.1, this language will say that you have to round it up to 16. The current language says if it was 15.1, it would just be 15 parking spaces.
Okay, I understand that, but I hope our audience understands it also. And this is off-site parking? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Payne Donovan, I, I'm sorry, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Ryan. Uh, Councilmember Payne Donovan, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks. All, this'll be my, my last comment or clarification here. Um, so Rich, just want to clarify, I think it's important, uh, the distinction you, you made. We're, we're talking about sort of extra parking spots or not ex, like, uh, sort of parking spots per, per unit or, um, something akin to that. I guess the, the main question or the thing I'd like to, to get at is related to, um, how many extra parking spots we might be seeing across the city in the next few years or, um, over a certain number of projects, if, if, um, if that's possible. But just to, to give a ballpark if, if you came on that.
Uh, that's pretty hard to quantify, uh, the, the parking spaces across the city are, uh, uh, we don't have a, a current parking utilization inventory that I know of. Uh, but I do know that, uh, uh, as we're working through the comp plan and some of the projected, uh, population growth and jobs that we're gonna have to absorb over the next, uh, twenty years, uh, parking is going to get much tighter on street. Uh, plus, as we work through the transportation master plan and, uh, we want to make sure we have a, a solid network of sidewalks and, uh, bike lanes. Uh, the parking on street is going to be, uh, I'm guessing scarcer than it is today. And so, uh, we're going to need to rely, if we need parking, on more off-street parking.
Good. Thank you, Rich. Uh, Councilmember Payne Donovan, is that? Answer the question sufficiently for, or, or-ish for now?
Yeah, and I'll, 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 uh, I'll stop there and, and let, uh, Councilmember Murray go.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. All right, Councilmember Murray, go ahead.
And work technology. Thanks, Rich. Appreciate you coming back and appreciate all of the, the conversation from, from my colleagues. I guess, given kind of the, the robust conversation here and our kind of general intent that, you know, this project was mostly about transitioning, you know, current state into a singular document. I guess I'm curious if there's like a driving need for us to make this adjustment right at the moment or if this would maybe be better served as part of our conversation as we look ahead to some of our, you know, bigger picture, uh, conversations, um, and then circling back to this after we do that. I guess I'm just curious on the timing piece and Rich and kind of like, is this, is this a driving decision that we need to make now in terms of this update? Or is it something that maintaining the current language around, um, feels like it could create potential issues between now and, you know, next year, uh, when we're having this conversation again?
Uh, there is not a driving need to do this at the current time. Uh, what you'll see is, as you look through a lot of these revisions, we haven't made code revisions in some time. And so, uh, since we're presenting a number of code revisions tonight, it, it's including some of these issues like, uh, this. And, uh, if we choose not to, uh, approve this revision tonight, uh, we can certainly, uh, bring that back at a later time.
Okay, great. Thanks, Rich. I think that, at least from my perspective, initially makes sense. I mean, I think the general rounding is kind of consistent with what I think people think of when they think of rounding. So I think whether or not, you know, rounding down generally or up generally and the impact on total number of parking spots, it sounds like there's, uh, you know, additional information that might be helpful as we consider the potential impact of, of that decision. So at least from my perspective, um, you know, the idea of leaving the current, um, language versus the revision that's proposed, uh, seems like a, a good current state path forward.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Um, I, I'm gonna put a flag on that specific topic and then ask Rich about, uh, finishing your presentation and particularly let's flag anything, any, anything that we're changing, uh, like the parking requirements. Is there any other major changes that we need to at least be aware of in, in adopting anything tonight? So Rich, why don't you go ahead and finish off and let's particularly flag a, any additional areas that we're making key changes on?
Uh, certainly. And there are some other areas, and so I'll try to make sure I can, I pick them out here for you. Um, this, uh, this correction or this proposed revision here has to deal with our Transportation Demand Management Program. Uh, currently, we have a program that allows, uh, developments to reduce the number of required parking spaces if they have some type of a transportation demand management, uh, program in place. So usually, uh, TDM program, Transportation Demand Management, uh, applies to a business. Cause a business can have programs like carpool or ORCA card subsidies or something that would be an incentive to an employee to carpool or find an alternative transportation. Uh, I've seen it, uh, proposed for residential units where you don't have that central, uh, uh, entity that's helping to reduce the overall transportation demand on a site. Uh, if it's just residential units, uh, you're still gonna need a certain number of units per dwelling. So we, we were proposing, uh, uh, some changes to the language here, just to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I think let, let's go ahead and, and run through each of the changes, Rich, that, uh, that we, and then let's, just so we are aware of the, the list, and then we'll come back to each one uh, and have discussion with the council on each of those various topics, if that's all right, everybody?
Hi.
Uh, Councilmember Ryan?
You're right on. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Then let's do that.
So this next one, uh, is something that we've run into in, in some of our latest, uh, proposals, uh, uh, building proposals. And it has to do with, uh, whether a column, uh, can encroach into a parking space. So what we've currently got in our code defines that there shouldn't be an obstruction in a parking space. But, uh, it's unclear or it's not clearly spelled out what constitutes an obstruction. Uh, the current language just talks about a planter island. So we were enhancing the current language to also say obstructions, uh, obstructions such as a planter island, a wall or a column or other obstructions. Just to clarify that, uh, uh, an obstruction is, uh, more than just a planter island. It could be a wall or, or a column or, uh, anything physical that limits the width of, uh, uh, available width of a parking space.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Uh, this number thirteen is just a clarification that all traffic control devices have to, uh, conform with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. We're just making that, uh, clear so there isn't any confusion. This is actually a federal requirement, and so we're just making sure our code is compliant with the federal requirement. Here's another item that we're cleaning up in the code, and it has to do with, uh, uh, the figures that go along with, uh, parking next to a planting, a planted zone. So there was some confusion with this here figure as to what it's actually telling somebody they need to do. Uh, the intent is that, uh, if you're going to have a vehicle overhang, you should have, uh, a curb or wheel stop, uh, uh, at least two feet from your planted area so you can protect the trees and the grass and such. But the figure didn't quite say that. Uh, it was showing that this tree is on top of pavement. So we're just trying to, as part of our cleanup of the code, clean up the figure so it actually, uh, makes sense. And this figure goes in with what we were talking about with the obstructions in the parking stalls. We're, we're, uh, revising, proposing to revise this figure to kind of follow what we were saying in the, uh, language and, uh, up above. So this, uh, this section on loading spaces also addressed some of the, uh, issues that we've been, um, and questions that we've been getting recently. It's, uh, uh, if we have a, uh, a, a multi-story residential building, how many onsite loading spaces, uh, do they need? And, uh, uh, what I did was I, uh, I uncovered a study that was done, uh, in Seattle. And, uh, it had done kind of a nationwide survey of, uh, the different restrictions in different municipalities, uh, which kind of leads us to proposing, uh, for, um, residential, uh, um, developments that have fifty to two hundred, nine hundred ninety-nine dwelling units. They should have at least one off-site loading space. If they have two hundred to four hundred, uh, units, then they should have two loading spaces. And if they have more than, uh, four hundred or more, uh, residential units, they should have three loading spaces. Part of the reason, uh, we wanted to add this code is our code is silent right here. And so, uh, without having this type of language in the code, uh, then we get, uh, resistance from developers who don't want to provide as many parking spaces. But we're thinking that of, if we're, uh, if we want to serve our residents, i- if there's four hundred dwelling units in an apartment building, is one loading space or two loading spaces enough? And, uh, the same thing's gonna happen with some of the on-street, uh, areas. Uh, you know, we get lots of deliveries from UPS and Amazon. And so, uh, places where they can pull off and deliver and then head on their way are important on the street. But for people moving in and out of their apartments, uh, it's better to have a place, uh, onsite that they can, uh, uh, use that wouldn't be, uh, necessarily repurposed if it was on the street. So that's why we were proposing, uh, this type of requirement. Sorry, I'm gonna go up to the beginning. I think that's all of the significant changes in, uh, ordinance nineteen dash one twenty-five.
Okay, and, um, so it, it sounds like there's a couple of areas we need to have a little further discussion on. Um, before we do go into any further discussion on some of those key areas, uh, Rich, is there anything else that you want to highlight, uh, to, or touch on before we go into discussion?
I would say, I, I would, I would suggest that, uh, let's discuss this one and then we could move on to, uh, one of the other ordinances because, uh, we have a, a different ordinance for every chapter. And so we could, uh, approve some and then, uh, uh, table some other ones for some further discussion if you like.
All right, that sounds good. Uh, all right, so on that note, we'll stick with the parking standards and, uh, discussion on parking standards and the changes that are being proposed in the parking code. Um, let's start with that first one, Rich, that you were, that we had a little discussion on, which was the, changing the, the portions. Sorry, let me get to, okay, so it looks like we've got to, uh, got that highlighted on the screen. So we're looking at the, what unit of measurement determining the number of required parking spaces results in any fractional number of spaces. Uh, the required number of spaces shall be rounded up to the next whole number is the proposed change as opposed to doing fractional up to point five. So, uh, let's have discussion on that and if, if we'd like to consider that, uh, adopt that change now or have that, uh, further discussion at a future time. Councilmember Payne Donovan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll, I'll try to keep my, my question, um, brief. I, I'm mostly curious if this is sort of rounding up for one, uh, extra parking spot for, say, an entire, you know, multi-unit building? Um, or is it, um, you know, rounding up for, say, a, um, yeah, per, per unit, um, sort of situation, if that makes any sense? So say you have a, a, you know, a hundred, uh, residential unit building. Um, there's a certain ratio per, per unit is, is this, um, update? Say, if you, if there were a hundred and hundred point, you know, three, uh, is to make something up hundred point three, um, stalls for that building, then you'd have to round up to one hundred and, and one. Does that compute, Rich?
Uh, it does. This only affects one space and it's only gonna affect those, uh, developments where they have the, uh, calculation, the calculation for parking requirements is, uh, 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 point five or less. So, uh, I think overall, this isn't going to result in a lot of extra parking spaces. Uh, it's just, uh, it's just, uh, uh, a math, how we want to compute the math for that. It's not gonna provide or take away, uh, a lot of parking spaces.
So just to, to rephrase this one more time, you know, this, this might result in, you know, in one building, it might result in an extra parking space where there might not have been. Is that fair to say? Or would it be more than one per building?
It, it would be one. That's correct.
Okay, great. Well, in, in that, thank you so much for clarifying and, and I am, I'm happy to support, uh, moving this, this edit forward.
Very good. Uh, and I know Councilmember Somer had previously indicated her support for, uh, this change as well. Any other, any other comments, thoughts, considerations? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, follow-up question, Rich, for, um, Councilmember Payne Donovan's question. So, I mean, talked about it in terms of like a large building, right? Where, I mean, the difference between one hundred spots and one hundred and one spots is not substantial, right, at one percent? But I guess in turn to like, if we're talking about lower density, I guess, development. I mean, so if we're talking about a duplex, um, I mean, is this, is it the same no matter how many units are in the building? So if the parking requirement was four, or the parking, you know, calculation was four point oh one, um, you know, parking spots, does that mean then they have to find five, increasing it by like twenty-five percent? Versus, I guess I want to make sure that I'm understanding what we, what we are saying here.
Technically, I think you're correct. If it was four, with this language, if it was four point oh one, then they could be required to do five.
Okay, so I will say I like that. For me, still holds concern in terms of like not really understanding the total impact of potentially, um, a lot of that middle housing development that I know, um, you know, is an incredible need in our community and where we've gotten a lot of feedback about how challenging it is to get all of the requirements in to, you know, the spaces that we have available. I guess I would be concerned about things that make it harder than our intentions were, right? Cause we're really talking about rounding up in a significant way that's different than like how any of us learned how to do math to begin with, right? Like, so I guess from my perspective, this feels a little bit concerning in that it, it may create additional barriers. Um, and I, I think, you know, there could be some potential net good in terms of extra spots. And again, I think if we were talking about a hundred, you know, it, a development that had a hundred parking spots and adding an additional one, maybe that would be welcome and really, really good and not super impactful. Um, but, but I do worry about potential unintended consequences here in terms of particularly, um, you know, kind of that middle, middle, middle housing, um, you know, kind of that middle, middle, middle housing. So I guess from my perspective, I don't feel ready to move forward and vote for this, given how it lands currently. But I'm also happy to vote on it if I'm the only one that feels that way, so.
Okay, I got Councilmember Payne Donovan and then Councilmember Somer.
Yes, I would, I would agree not, you know, to change my, my statement again. Appreciate Councilmember Murray pointing, pointing this out. I think if, you know, below a certain unit size, I think it makes sense to actually sort of have a tiered approach there. And I absolutely appreciate what she just laid out because I know of projects that have been broken because of parking requirements elsewhere, of course, but I think we want to avoid sort of those types of situations. So I would, I would actually prefer that we might revisit this and, you know, for those middle housing type projects, you know, if we are rounding down under a certain unit size or a certain number of units, I, that would be my preferred approach.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. Councilmember Somer, go ahead.
I, I guess I'm getting concerned about the overbuilding of Mount Lake Terrace. We have so many people that we're going to put in our city and we're already going to be reaching that amount soon. So if we're talking about just a parking space, why don't we start talking about if we reach this threshold of getting so many people in by this year, then we stop building altogether because we only have a certain threshold of somebody telling us that we have to add, what, another almost fourteen thousand people in the next twenty years? And if we're already adding all these apartments, then we can stop building after ten years and wait and then go on. We're talking about a parking space. I'm talking about people living and bringing their children to a soccer game or to something. Everybody's not going to be using light rail. And I'm just thinking, it, it's one parking space and we had a developer come in, in townhomes and you could spend, I think it was another fifteen hundred dollars to have a bigger garage to put your bike in, but you can't, you cannot have a truck. You can only have a car that fits a very small car. So we haven't even talked about what kind of vehicles fit into these parking spots. And we have covenants on certain buildings that people cannot store their stuff in their garage because it take, they have to park onsite. And I don't think we're policing that, but we're talking about a parking spot and we're talking about all these people coming in and we're talking about one little fraction of something. And if this breaks a project, then I would wonder why that project started because I don't think that people are losing money right now building as much as they should. That may be different on what they're doing, but we are charging, as soon as light rail goes in, up to a million dollars maybe for a townhome. And we're talking about parking spaces and we're just trying to figure out a fraction. So would you guys rather have a fourth of a fraction or three-fourths of a fraction? I think at this point, the engineering group is looking at how to round up or round down. And you're talking about rounding down, so I don't know, you, you talked about passing it on to the renter. Well, you know, at some point, Steve brought up, you know, looking at rent control. So then maybe we should start talking about rent control again and what people are being charged for, for rent and how much we're charging people for different things and look at how much each builder is making off of something. But I guess, I'm really surprised how long we're taking to talk on this item when I, I think it's pretty cut and dry and it's already gone through the planning commission and it's being recommended to us and we're just talking about rounding up or rounding down. I don't know if you're talking to developers on this, but I'm coming from the standpoint of residents and people living here.
Thank you, Councilmember Somer. Before, Councilmember Murray, I want to see if there's any other thoughts, discussions. I see Councilmember Woodard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Actually, I was hoping you would just kind of revisit. I believe you mentioned where you got your decision to round up at any number. Is that correct? Like, can we just kind of reinstitute that into this conversation? It wasn't just you decided, oh, I think we should go, because a point oh one, I don't know if that even comes up as a fraction in this scenario. So it's like, okay, sure, but the reality is, these numbers come back and they are two point three. And we're suggesting that you don't get to ignore the point three. You're, you'd say, hey, that's still a car, if you will, so where's the spot for it? Which I just kind of want to say, I feel like I've been on this council and all I've ever heard us say is, we need more parking, we need more parking. And now we're saying, no, we don't want them to put more parking in. So I'm a little turned around just for that reason as well. But nonetheless, if you can just clear up, where's this coming from? Again, I think you already said it, but just for our sake, before we move forward with more finite, I feel like we're way in the weeds on this at this moment.
I'd say it, it came from some of our developments where we're calculating how much parking is required. And whenever you do a parking calculation and you run into a fraction, you, there's two camps. There's those that follow normal rounding, you know, justifications or the fact that there's no such thing as point three of a car, so you would round it up. So I think that that's, this is not something that there's any specific ruling or any type of decision pending on it. This is something that, as we were reviewing the code, and this was a question that came up a couple times, that we would propose a, a change to it. But it's, it's, it's certainly something that, you know, we'll follow whatever council desire is on whether we should include it or not.
Thank, thank you, Rich. All right, Councilmember, Councilmember Woodard, first of all, does that answer your question?
It does.
Next.
Very good, thank you. And then, Aaron, I promise I'll get to you. Councilmember Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First of all, Mr. Meredith, I want to thank you for going, hearing all this because, you know, you're working on the manual and getting things straight and all that. And now you're hearing some really pointed items here. And I appreciate you to hang in there and not walk out on us. Because on the parking thing, it said onsite parking. Is that like an apartment or a condo or a townhome or what is that?
Apartment, business, anything that's not on the street is offsite.
Okay. And then I thought our town center design was one point five parking spots per unit. Is that changed?
I don't know the town center off the top of my head, but we have a different requirement for depending on which zone you're in and depending on what land use we're talking about, so.
Yeah, I was under the assumption that it was one point five when we did our apartments on two thirty-sixth. And I know you're new to this, but that's what I know. Is there any other council member or we have, Christie going to help us? Okay, thank you, Christie.
So the parking requirement varies for town center based on the number of bedrooms that was decided on. So I don't know off the top of my head right now, but I believe a studio required one parking space and then it goes up one point five to spaces depending on the number of bedrooms.
That's great because, you know, I heard some other cities around us, it's less than that. And that's why I'm having trouble driving on Highway ninety-nine because everybody's parking there because they can't park in their apartment. So that's on Shoreline, that's up in Linwood, and now we're Mount Lake Terrace. So I'm, I just really want to kind of protect that. And a lot of people go, well, if you're going to provide more parking, then it costs more. Okay, then it costs more. Let's do it right. Let's not do it cheap. That's my voice. So I'd like to just put that there and I don't want to put you, Rich, in that position, but this is for the council members. Do we want to go cheap and drive down the road and you can get mowed over and run over? I'm, I'm on fifty-eighth right here. I almost got hit twice the other day just on fifty-eighth. It's supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour and they're going sixty. And I almost got hit twice. I mean, it's, and then we're going to have an apartment complex here of what, three twenty-two and now it's at three twenty-three? And then we got some down here, four or something? We're going to get run over. But then again, oh, let's get rid of the cars. Let's get bikes. But then I'm thinking, Grandma, how are you going to go to Costco and get your case of toilet paper and your case of paper towels on your bike? And you're ninety years old, how, how are you going to do that, Grandma? Well, I'm going to do ride share. Yeah, but you can't drive. Oh, well, anyway, just throwing out a little utopia stuff there. But we were one point five and now it seems like it's kind of changing per unit. Oh, another thing is, we're adding apartments, we're not adding condos. We, we do have townhomes, but when you add apartments, you're not developing any equity or wealth. So think about it, when you were young, we lived in an apartment and then we worked to get a home. But these apartments are two to three thousand dollars a month. I don't know how they're affording it. But anyway, I just want to, another soapbox there, but just want to let you know, is any other council member concerned about one point five or less in parking? Thank you.
So just to clarify, Councilmember Ryan, so for a studio, it was one parking space. For one bedroom, it's one point five. And for two or more bedrooms, it's two spaces that are required. And that's what we adopted as part of the town center plan.
You know, that's really good because I hear surrounding cities don't even have that. They have way less than that. So I'm really glad to hear, sorry to hear that. It's just that, you know, we got to have a bike or a car or a horse. And we, I don't think we allow horses here anymore. We do in Briar, they do in Briar, but you got to pick up the poop. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Before we get to Councilmember Murray, it looks like City Manager has a quick comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to also, not to inject too much complexity into the discussion, but the, where you get a lot of the fractional parking, and Christie can speak to this or Rich, depends on what type of retail goes into the retail spaces that are being provided as part of these mixed-use developments. There's different calculations based on, you know, is it a coffee shop? Is it a dry cleaning storefront? Is it, you know, what it happens to be? So I just wanted to, to mention that, to make sure you factor that into your, your considerations this evening.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Murray, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I mostly would go back to, I, I think there's been lots of conversation here. I guess I would ask that we, we not assume that just because somebody has a different perspective, that that is not one that they bring also as a resident and somebody who is also speaking to our residents and who does drop their kids off at soccer practice here within our community. So, but, you know, I think it goes back to like, these are really complex issues and it is not as simple as saying, I, I, I want parking, I want, I want people to be able to navigate our community in the, the method that they choose, including their vehicles, which I drive, I drive often, I drive a lot of places in any given day, given my schedule, and recognize that parking has real impact on our ability to navigate both our community and, and navigate our lives. And there are trade-offs. And I think, you know, we've, I heard multiple, I mean, whether it is, I mean, when we were talking about some of these issues, like, it is not just like a fraction of a, a spot. And again, if we were talking about just large apartment buildings, like, fine, I'm neither here nor there about an extra, you know, spot in, you know, a, a, an apartment building with a hundred parking spots. But when we're talking about affordability, which has come up in multiple places in this conversation, and you're right, I don't know how people, Councilmember Ryan, are affording to live here today. I don't think many of us could afford to move to Mount Lake Terrace today if we didn't already buy into the community years ago when it was far less expensive. And as a parent, as someone who was priced out of my childhood home and worries about my children being priced out of their childhood home, like, I, I, I want us to think, like, I don't think men, oftentimes, we have really good intent around policy decisions that have really negative consequences. And I think things like this sometimes matter, right? And so that is why I'm asking the questions that I am, because I want to understand the scale of the impact and what that potentially means in terms of, you know, creating the community that I think we have very much a shared vision on as a council. And so I guess for me, like, it feels like we had something in place that is not drastically different, but that uses, you know, rounding techniques that I think my kids practice, you know, when they're practicing math for school in terms of like, if it is, you know, what is it to? Any fraction up into including point five, you round down. And if it's above that, you round up. That I like, it seems to me that there's, I mean, if we want to have additional conversation, you know, we, I think we should absolutely do that as part of kind of our comprehensive planning process and all of the strategic conversations that we're having, but it feels like we are really in the weeds here on this. And there's obviously complexity that may take a long time to dig through. So I, I would go back to where I started, my, my comments tonight and say that I, I would prefer that we not move forward with the proposed change on this particular, you know, provision and that we revisit it in the future and leave it as was, which is that if it is up into point five that we round down and if it is point five one and above, we round up. So I, I will continue, continue to advocate for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. All right. To allow us to move on, can we get all those in favor of the change? So there's, there's two options we have. One is a, a lot, approving the change as proposed. Or, and the other is to have, take it that off the table for now and have further discussion on parking at a later time? Does that make everybody understand that what, that, what we're, what we're considering at this point? And so with that, maybe I can ask for all those in favor of the, tabling the change. Please indicate with a hand motion, a, a, I, okay, so it looks like.
I, I don't know if you can see us here in the council.
Yeah, that's like, that's like my challenge here. Councilmember Ryan and Councilmember Woodard.
So you're, Brian, just to, so you're saying that item number B on nineteen one twenty-five dot oh four, under general provision, we're going to table approving the whole plan tonight based on what the council thinks about item number B?
No.
And you're asking everybody who wants to table it to vote right now on just item number B?
Right, yes. I, I, I guess, I'm trying to get us to be able to move on to everything else and be able to approve the plan tonight. I'm, I'm asking about this one specific question about tabling this specific issue for a discussion, further discussion at another time and allow us, if we do table it, then we would come back to that part later, but be able to allow us to move on and approve the rest of the proposal tonight.
So Brian, just to, to make sure that we have a whole nother agenda item just on item number B. Is that right, in the future? And that would just be on item number B about the fractions?
Or anything else that we may table, but I basically, things that we're going to come back to for further discussion. And, and I think, I think we need to have a whole further discussion about parking in general, right? I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues related to parking and, and this is one piece of some, you know, bigger picture of how we address parking in general is my, my opinion. And. It's my, my opinion and our thoughts on, on parking. And, you know, some of this has been raised as far as how we're addressing it, whether it's, you know, parking, as Councilmember Ryan has pointed out, there's, there's, you know, one, one stall per studio, one and a half for one bedroom, one, two, for two bedroom, et cetera. And then, and so that, and that's a whole nother discussion. This is just about one aspect of the, the ratio of rounding up or down on, and, and, but yes, the idea would be whether we want to keep this change as proposed in consideration for tonight, or do we want to table this discussion for another, another time? As well as anything else that, as we go through the changes, there will be other, there may be others that we want to table for further discussion at another time. Does that make sense to everybody? Yes, no?
Clarifying question.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Sorry, I just want to make sure that, I was going to say, Councilmember Sommers' question made me, I thought I understood and maybe now I need some additional clarity. So we are talking about moving forward and voting to move this forward. So tabling the conversation about this particular item does what? Does what? Moves it forward as, as proposed, as the change is proposed? And then we're going to come back to it?
The, I, thank you for the question. The intent is to table this specific item on the ratio of parking for further discussion at another time, but allow us to be able to move on with the overall proposal.
Right, so the proposal would be as amended, not as existed previously?
Correct, if we table it. If we table this item for discussion.
Okay, okay, that's helpful, thank you. I, yes, I think, I think so.
Okay.
May I add?
Please, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. So we could table that one section or we could vote on it and amend to table, I don't know if that's it or not, 19.125.04. I'd set it just B, just table that whole general provisions. That's included, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Is there any more?
Mayor Protim, our legal counsel has his hand up.
Thank you.
David, go ahead. Thank you. David, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. David Galazin again here, filling in for Hillary this evening. You know, I just want to make sure that, that you remain focused on where you're at. You know, you've got a public hearing still that's attached to the consideration of these changes. So I would, I would not recommend that you try and figure out what you may want to amend about the main motion at this point. Just kind of note it and then, you know, open, close the public hearing. At that point, you know, procedurally, what would be the easiest would be is to make a motion to approve. And then if that's seconded for discussion purposes, then you can make a motion to amend, you know, this section, if, as I'm hearing it, I think it sounds like amending this section to, to not, to take out the proposed change to this. And then you can vote on the main, and anything else you may want to, to table, as you say, for the, for the rest of it. And then you can come back to those provisions at a later date and that would allow you to move forward with voting on this entire proposal as amended tonight, if that's what you're hoping to do.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. Thank you, I, we were getting ahead of ourselves. I was getting ahead of ourselves, sorry about that. So with that, let me, while we're on the parking, let me ask, are there, is there any other, any of the other changes that Rich had outlined that we want to flag for further discussion after we close the public hearing? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
I guess I would just appreciate understanding if there are fractional sort of parking standards for, for the middle housing or, you know, less, less dense housing types. And understanding that would really think help clarify this, this conversation and the, and the overall impact. So appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Councilmember Payne Donovan. Okay, I, I think what we need to do, Rich, is just continue with the, all of the changes and have councilmembers ask questions, but we'll have further discussion on anything. So make a note on anything going forward that you want to flag and have further discussion on or potentially amend once we get to that point. But before, but before we can have that discussion, we need to get through the, the rest of the presentation, all of, and answer any questions, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, then put the motion on the table and then we can have further discussion. David, right?
That is correct, yes. Sounds good.
Very good. Thank you, all right. With that, Rich, why don't you carry on?
Okay, so this is the clarifying language for residential dwellings are not eligible for TDM parking reduction. Is there any comments about that one?
Questions, we're leaving these questions. We'll have comments and discussion after we open, close the public hearing.
Mayor Protim, can I weigh in with a question?
Yes, yes, please, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Rich. I was going to say, is that, is that, I guess, just in terms of like, is that kind of the normal standard? You explained it, it made it sense, but I guess just understanding. So TDM is not normally applied to residential properties, which is why we're adding that clarification?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
This is just changes to a figure. Does anybody have any questions about that? Here's changes to another figure. Are there any questions about this one?
Could I have a question?
Councilmember Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. The planter island, the curb, I saw the front. What's the curb? Is there a specification on the width of the curb?
We are using just a standard six inch curb in our details. There's, in this here figure, if you look at the bottom definition, it says an 18 inch curb. But we don't have a detail for that. What the intent of this is, is to provide some separation from the planted area and where somebody parks their car.
Okay, the planter island, is that a specification?
There are standard details for our planter islands.
Because I know the planter islands that are located at D and D meets are not very pleasant. People are falling on them and they're filled with Douglas fir and cedar. Because our location here, we have a lot of Douglas fir and it's very prolific. And the cedar too, and, oh, and the Western red cedar. And so people, they're growing and then people think that someone planted them there. Then you open up your car door and you hit it. And it's not really supposed to be there. Because a lot of people haven't taken horticulture and they don't understand trees. So I'm just wondering why it's that width? Can it be less? I don't know. Wouldn't it be nice if you could get out of your car or if you have a horse, you could park your horse there and get off and then not fall on a berm or a tree? But I don't know, I'm just kind of wondering about the planter island. Thank you.
So the planter islands are, are a feature that we're trying to incorporate in more of our designs. These design standards are going to be for new construction or renovations. If they're already existing, then they're basically grandfathered as they currently are until they make some changes to their site. Some of the revisions though, to this figure, I just wanted to highlight, we're currently asking for an 18 inch separation from the curb. And we were proposing, staffs proposing to change that to 12 inches. Because if we're going to include walls and columns, this is what we call the shy distance from a wall or a column. And 18 inches is pretty excessive, especially if you're inside a parking garage where the spaces cost the developers money. So we're trying to reduce the 18 inch dimension, but still try to enhance the language about obstructions.
I like that change and I'm sorry to belabor the planter island. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. All right, Rich, carry on.
So this is the section on the required loading spaces based on the size of the residential development. Are there any questions about that?
I do not see any at this time. All right, go ahead, Rich, go ahead.
I think that's the end of the significant changes in 19.125.
Okay, next section. And again, councilmembers, make notes of any, any of those areas you have concerns about for discussion after we put the motion on the table for consideration. And we can come back to that. For now, we're just answering questions and going through each of the changes.
So this next one is our 19.95. This is our transportation code. A lot of these are editorial or information that we've moved to the EDM. So let's see, this is where we revised the reference documents. We've referenced a number of different documents in the code and they need to be updated at times. So we've cleaned up the language. The first one on the list is our new engineering development manual. Once we adopt that, that will become one of our reference publications. We've cleaned up some of these other, with the latest addition and deleted out the ones that are referenced in the EDM itself.
Very good, any questions on that? Seeing none, Rich, go ahead.
In a lot of places, there are references in our code to the Engineering Services Director. We no longer have that position and so we replaced those with city engineer.
Okay, any questions? Very good, carry on.
Section 199520 has a number of definitions that we've gone through and edited to make them current. And there's also an appendix of definitions in the EDM. So we've tried to make sure that where we keep the definition in the code, it matches what's in the EDM. And in some cases, we've taken it out of the code because it's in the EDM. So this is cleaning up the language in the code primarily.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on that? Seeing none?
This section right here is just adding some language to kind of strengthen our requirements that we have to follow the American with Disabilities Act. There is going to be similar language in the EDM, but we kept this in the code just to give it some extra teeth.
All right, any questions on that? Looks like we're good to go? Go ahead, Rich.
This, this here language is just to identify again that we're, we're moving our, a lot of our standards to the engineering development manual. And the language that struck out about if a conflict exists was moved to the end of this chapter.
All right, looks good. Don't see any questions. Go ahead.
So here's a, a number of lighting design standards. These have all been moved to the EDM.
Makes sense. I'm assuming there's no questions on that. Looks like we're good, go ahead.
Here's where we've cleared up or clarified some language about private streets. And again, we've moved some of the language about shared driveways and private accesses into the EDM so that a lot of that information is in one place.
And it's all, the note, when we move into the EDM, just to clarify the question, there, we're not changing anything from what we have in code to the EDM. It's just, it's just changing locations.
We're not changing the intent. I can't say that there hasn't been some word smithing to, to still meet the intent.
Yeah, but the intent, the intent is the same. I guess that's the question, right?
Correct, the intent is the same.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay, carry on.
Moved the, the drafting and surveying standards into the EDM, so we took it out of code.
Very good, I think we're okay. I don't see any questions. Carry on.
Let's see, we struck the traffic calming program from the code. This is a function of our engineering department. And we're, it's something that's existing. So we, just as part of our code cleanup, we didn't know that it necessarily needs to stay in the code, that we're going to have and operate that type of a program.
Any questions on that? I'm assuming that, as you point out, that we're, we're already doing that, but there's no, in other words, we're not getting rid of traffic calming. We're just taking it out of code in this section, but continuing the practice? Very good, any questions on that?
And then this 1995100 is where we moved the language about conflicts.
Okay. And late, latecomer fees gets transferred to a different section, the fee section.
Those are in the EDM.
EDM, very good. All right, so any questions on that? Looks like we're good to go?
So this is the end of the proposed changes for 1995.
Okay.
I think we talked about 1950 with some of the changes to the Town Center Code. But there was one change that I, there's one change and I'm not sure where it is. I can't put my finger on it at the moment. And it has to do in, again, with parking. And it has to do in, again, with parking in town center. There's language in the zoning code now currently that in town center, the parking requirements for a, for offsite parking, that the development can count the on-street parking that's available. And staff was recommending that we change that, that to say that on-street public right-of-way parking is not eligible to be counted. And the reason for that is that on-street parking may or may not exist in the long run if it's needed for different purposes, bicycles or, or loading zones, or maybe a wider sidewalk. And so if we have a need for a certain amount of parking in a development, that the requirement should be met onsite instead of counting the additional parking offsite or on the street.
And that's for the town center code specifically?
Towns, the town center code says it specifically that they can count it, and we were proposing to change it. And I can't put my hands on it right at the moment.
It's all right, let's, I, I, just as far as the idea, are there any questions on that? Again, if there's concerns, then flag it, and we'll come back for their discussion at, later, but right now let's focus on questions, any questions? Okay, I don't see any. I think we're okay there, Rich. Go ahead.
I think that covers the significant items. The, I'm going to go back to my presentation just to make sure I haven't missed anything. Too many screens. I do need three screens.
So do I.
Okay. So I think we've covered most of the, the, the subject of interest that I highlighted here. The clarifications to the off-street parking, we spent a lot of time on that, and the lighting, the right-of-way design. So I think we've covered most of these items. And, wow, they were at the discussion and questions, so.
Okay. Very good. So unless there's any further questions that we have, I would entertain, oh, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. If we could go back to the map with 57th Avenue West, which is part of Phase 3. I know we're not here to totally discuss this street, but there was something listed. It was more of a pedestrian street or something. Was there something on this map that indicated it was not like a normal, there it is, pedestrian core street? What's that?
So we have, in, in the town center code, we have two different cross-sections that we can use for a pedestrian core street. This top one incorporated some angle parking, which is why I left the angle parking car on there. But it involves a 38 feet from curb to curb and a 15-foot sidewalk and planting strip. What, what the city is envisioning for that is because it's a pedestrian core street, this isn't intended to be a thoroughfare. It's, it's intended to be more of a pedestrian-oriented street, pedestrians and bicycles, something that could be closed off for events or, you know, or for pedestrian-based uses, I guess, is the best way to do it. We envisioned that it would be ground floor retail on both sides, and there wouldn't be a through route for traffic.
Would it still be 38 feet wide?
There are two options, 38 or 36.
So 36 feet wide?
Thirty, yeah, that's what the, the town, current town center code calls for. Now, this is going to be fleshed out with the public process because we've heard interest in some type of a woonurf type of design. That's a Dutch word for a road that doesn't really have curbs on it. So there's a, a kind of a mingling of pedestrians and, and such along the roadway. If it could be 36 feet wide, or as part of our design concepts and design alternatives, I could foresee that 36 feet fluctuating. It's going to depend on what comes out of the public process, is I guess the best way to put it. Because we would like to steer this design towards what we think that the, that's best for the city and the local residents.
Yes, definitely public process, because I am not able to go shopping in the last two weeks without being talked about 57th Avenue. So for the council, this will be coming up for me. I will be doing some research. And thank you very much. And by the way, you're doing a great job. And I hope you don't quit because we keep asking you all these questions. But I think you've been really great on answering all our questions for us. So, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Very good, all right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Anyone?
Make a motion to open public hearing?
Move to open public hearing, please.
Thank you.
Let Laura do it.
Councilmember Ryan, is that a second?
Second for Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. All right, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The public hearing is now open. Jennifer, what do we have for public hearing? Anybody signed up? Anywhere?
There was, there were no in-person sign-ups or pre-registrations for online comment or written comments received. There were none.
Good. And is anybody in the audience that would like to testify at this time?
No.
All right, it looks like there is no public testimony on the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing?
Councilmember Sonmore, second. Councilmember Ryan?
I'll second it, thanks.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we are now closed. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the 2024 Engineering Development Manual ordinance. And then if there is, then after, we will have discussion. And any, if there's any changes we want to propose, we'll have the discussion on, on that at the time. But we first need a motion on the table. I'll entertain a motion, anybody? Councilmember Sonlar?
Move to adopt the 2024 Engineering Development Manual, known as EDM or NICS.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Woodard, seconds. Oh, thank you very much. So we now have a motion on the table. Now, let's have some discussion on any flags that anybody wants to raise. Now would be the time to
Yes.
Raise those, it looks like
Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Murray and Councilmember Payne Donovan. Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Who first?
Councilmember Ryan, go ahead.
Oh, I move to make a motion to amend the 19.125.040 general provisions to be tabled for further scrutiny on this.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second to table section 19, I'm sorry, 19.125.040B? Any changes to that section? We're tabling that for further discussion at another time.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Not just B, the entire 19.125.040 for further looking at, because I think we need to look at all of it, not just B.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? I need a second to the motion. Councilmember Payne Donovan, second? Is that correct? Okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember, so we have a motion and a second to table 19 point oops, hold on, I lost it. 19, oh, you gotta, 19 point, you gotta scroll up, I can't see it. 19.125.040 for further discussion at another time. All those, I need discussion on tabling that, that section. Okay, Councilmember Sonmore, go ahead.
So we're, so the vote is to table this because what I understood it to be first is part of the council doesn't, they want to remove the parking or make it less, and some want just to round up. I, I just would like to pass it as is, and then we could always go back and look at section B, or is this to put a full parking study or something on a future agenda? It's just that we're trying to put something here for our department to understand what's going on. And I'm not sure exactly we're, we're just looking at general provisions for parking facilities in the future? Is that what we're doing? So can we just approve this section, just leave it the way it is right now? And then I'm assuming it would be left the way it is right now. And in the future, we're telling the city what? To just look at that fraction and give us some information, or look at parking altogether? That's what I'm just, I'm just not sure what direction we're putting forward in the actual vote.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. So what we, what the motion to table would do is keep the current code in place rather than adopt the proposed changes. And basically, we'd be coming back to, we, we could direct staff to bring that topic up for further discussion at another time. But the motion is to table discussion on that change at this time. Does that make sense?
I was just looking real fast. Is that the only one in this section? See, there's more down below.
And that's, right, and that's, that's the only thing, the motion's put on table this time. There may be further, further things we want to table as well later on, but at this time, there's just that, that we're considering. That's the motion that's been put on the table is just for that one section.
But, but then, see, H is also in that section, and that's something that is a requirement. So I'm, I'm not sure, I know, I was trying to pull it up on my iPad here just to see if that was, are there only three sections in there? Changing the two for four, and then there's B, and then there's H. And I'm trying to think if there's, trying to pull it up here to see if there's anything else in that section. I, I just don't want to hinder something that.
No, that's a great question. So that, the motion as it stands, Rich, if you could scroll back up again, the motion as it stands would not, would not adopt the change of residential dwellings are not eligible for TDM parking reduction for commercially, and for, and, and clarify on the commercial uses. So that, the motion currently as it stands would table that for further discussion another time as well.
Even though it's a requirement? So that's where, that's where I'm getting a little off-base is what, what exactly is our purpose here that we're trying to scratch?
Well, let me, let's go back, if I can ask Councilmember Ryan?
Yes, if I could add?
Uh, yeah, maybe if you'd like to clarify your motion.
Okay. The idea of the amendment is to not include the exact wording for parking. Personally, I'd like to see the parking go up, not down, and not just rounded up. I think it's something we need to think about in our town. Looking at when you're driving on Highway 99 and you see Linwood, and you see all the cars on the highway now, you drive up and down Lake City Way, all the cars on the road now, shoreline, all the cars on the road now. I'm wanting us to kind of reevaluate the parking situation. So that's up for amendment and your consideration. Thank you.
Can I just have a re-
Sonmore, go ahead.
Rebuttal? Okay, that's kind of what I was thinking that Councilman Ryan wanted, but I'm not sure by, and I just want to make sure to clarify, I don't know if tabling this is going to get where he wants. I think directing the city to have a parking study or a parking reevaluation might be something that would get, I just don't know if tabling this section, well, I'll just leave it at that because maybe further on, we can direct what we're trying to get at because I don't we'll have to come back to this, and we'll have to look at it again, right? But what are, are we just going to go through the same motions again? Or are we going to direct the city to give us some numbers? I just don't want to frustrate the people who put this together and by us having to want to have a parking study or, or to do something different. And so that's where I'm getting to. So I'll just leave the amendment or the motion where it is now, but maybe we could go back with, you know, what we're trying to get out of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a quick question for Rich, ideally, so, because I'm generally supportive of B and fine moving forward with the amendment as proposed. Assuming that the addition of H doesn't create any issues, since it sounds like it's just clarification language versus an actual change. So I guess in terms of postponing potentially the inclusion of the changes in H, Rich, do you foresee that creating any significant issues or lack of clarity for, for folks?
We're proposing, just for clarity, I don't think this is going to affect anything, any currently proposed projects. Projects that are already in the, in the door are going to go under the current code. So this is just to clarify future projects. So does that answer your question?
No, let me, so are we worried that, I was gonna say, so we're, we're specifically calling out that residential dwellings are not eligible? Would a residential, like, do we have concerns that a residential dwelling is going to try to utilize this opportunity in order to reduce parking?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, okay, that is, that's helpful. So, okay, so from my perspective, I was going to say, it sounds, that is something that I'm, I'm comfortable including as part of this process. But, but would like to look at B, so that is helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and thank you, councilmember Murray. Any further discussion? I do want to point out that by tabling this, by, by mo- by, by passing the motion to amend and tabling this item, we would not be adopting the section H at this time. So with that, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of tabling this item for a future date, please say aye.
Aye. Probably need a roll call.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay, so I, it sounds like we have not adopted this motion to table. Uh, is there a need for?
Point of order, point of order.
Councilmember Ryan.
Uh, with uh many people on Zoom and two people here in, in chambers. The uh audio is off. And uh, so it's not clear who voted yes. Because when you said vote no, we had a yes. So what I, what I'd like you to do, if we could, my recommendation would be if we do a roll call vote for yes and a roll call vote for no. May we please?
Yes, councilmember Ryan, uh, we certainly can do that. Uh, so uh Jennifer, could you please call the roll on tabling this item?
To table the item, councilmember Murray?
Nay, I'm voting against the amendment.
Yeah, uh, councilmembers, if you just yea or nay, that would uh.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, nay.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Woodard?
Looks like I'm the swing vote here, so once again, just explain if I say yea then we are tabling it, if I say nay, we're not tabling it?
Correct.
And we're tabling it because we'll go into B and H specifically?
Correct.
Okay. Was it, yeah, I was gonna say the mayor hasn't voted, good to know. So I think I'm gonna go with nay, I don't want to keep talking about this.
Mayor Matumoto Wright?
Nay.
So that is a, a vote that the item is not tabled.
Okay, so um, to clarify that we have not tabled the item, this will continue to move forward for further discussion, councilmember Murray, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry, too many buttons over here. Okay, uh, I move to amend the motion to uh remove section B of uh or to move item B of section nineteen point one two five point oh four oh general provisions. Or not remove, sorry, let me, it's late, it's been a long day. I would like to, okay, I'm gonna start all over. I move to um, I move to amend the motion on the table to remove the edits to item B of section nineteen point one two five point oh four oh general provisions. Does that make sense? I think so.
Yes, very good, so now we've narrowed it down from the entire section to just item B. The parking uh for further, for consideration as to whether or not we want to table that section alone uh or remove the changes at this time. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. So all those, any further discussion? If not, we'll have a plain vote up or down on this, we'll do a roll call again. All those in favor, please say aye and all those opposed saying nay during your roll call vote, Jennifer, go ahead.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Woodard? For the record. Mayor Matumoto Wright?
Nay.
Nay? Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. So, so we have ta- uh, we have removed those changes uh from adoption tonight. Uh, we, I'm sure we will have further discussion on that item at a future date.
Yes, we will schedule that for you. So just to clarify, uh, section nineteen, nineteen point one two five point oh four oh B is not included in uh consideration, under consideration this evening, but will be at a future meeting.
Very good, okay, I think that was the intent of the motion. Um, very good, so with that, are there any other amend? Does anybody wish to amend any other section of the manual or code? Were there any other concerns raised uh in, in any other areas of the proposal? I do not see any other concerns. So therefore, I will, if there's no further discussion, then I will call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the twenty twenty-four Engineering Development Manual EDM ordinance as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, it looks like we have adopted it as unanimously, correct? Okay, very good, well done, everyone. We made it through that, we will look forward to further discussion on parking issues at uh another meeting. Uh, councilmember, uh, I saw Payne Donovan and then councilmember Sonmore, go ahead, uh, councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem, and I, I apologize, I, I have to um drop off, I've got a, a blood sugar issue here and, and I've stuck through this, our conversation here, but I need to tend to my health and I will um uh wish you all the best and I'll see you soon, so I apologize for, for uh this um unplanned uh departure here.
You take care of yourself, uh, we will carry on without you. Uh, thank you for sticking with us as long as you did. Councilmember Sonmore?
So I want to do a follow-up because I'm hearing two different sides and I want to make sure that both sides get their um issues. I don't really know if it's exactly item B that's the issue. Um, so I would direct um our city manager to have our staff if they could explain exactly the percentage of fifty percent, how it affects buildings and how it affects townhomes and if we can get some data on that. And then um also direct for a parking, um, Christie might probably could help me on how to word this, but um and, and maybe Rick, I'll leave it to you, um, I will turn it over to you, what you are thinking of um with the parking because just going over section B, how we amended it, I don't think gets to what you want to talk about and I think you want to talk to overall parking. So maybe you can um direct our city manager of what you wanted on that and I'll stop there.
Thank you, councilmember Sonmore and, yeah, Rick, uh, councilmember Ryan, if you wanted to add anything on that, but I agree, I think we, there's two separate uh discussion items. Uh, one big picture on parking in general that we, we need to have. Um, but more specifically, uh, a follow-up on this specific section as far as the ratio and, and the numbers rounding up and down and things like that, so I think there's a couple of different areas, but uh, councilmember Ryan, if you want to add anything else, or city manager, Jeff, if you wanted to add anything else on that.
So I would just say, uh, given the uh, the focus on the parking discussion tonight, that uh any discussion that we bring back specifically on item B will, I would expect morph into a larger discussion about parking throughout the whole community. So uh, that we will bring you uh information on what parking looks like, what we think it'll look like in the future. And uh, we don't have a date scheduled for that yet, but you can, you can be assured it'll be uh within oh forty-five days or so at most.
Yeah, appreciate that, thank you, thank you, Jeff, um, right, and, and I agree, it's, parking is a, is a big issue and uh needs further discussion and so we'll look forward to having that discussion with everybody, I think, uh, in, in the near future. Very good, all right, thank you, and uh, let's, councilmember Murray?
Can I just ask a question, just because I feel like I need to understand, so I guess a piece of this a little bit better. I feel like a lot of these like bigger picture conversations, at least for me, I've been like holding my thoughts on all the things, um, because I know we're going through the comprehensive planning process and it seems like most of the areas that tie into somehow strategic vision are, are kind of tied to that. And so I assumed we would be having some of these strategic conversations as part of that, which is kind of why, like, we didn't, you know, dig into like a lot of the like specifics around like projects for the last, you know, agenda item. And so like, I guess I just want to make sure that I understand, like, I'm happy to talk about parking standalone and I think to my comment earlier. I mean, none of the decisions we make are made in a vacuum and there are, you know, trade-offs and, you know, kind of, so I, I guess I'm just curious where parking fits into like the bigger strategic picture conversations as part of like our comprehensive planning process as well to make sure that like we're not duplicating efforts or putting like the cart before the horse, um, at least from my perspective.
So.
Thank you, councilmember Murray.
Oh, sorry, oh, this is Christie, I'll take this on, um, this is a timely conversation that's gonna come before you very shortly. And the reason it's gonna come before you is because of the state requirements on middle housing and proximity to the light rail station, so we're going to need to have this conversation of what um some new state law requirements are regarding um what we can require for uh parking in proximity around light well, light rail. And I think it also speaks to a broader question on overall parking. And so we have different standards right now in the city, across the city and across different zones as well. So um, we were intending, uh, we actually had a conversation, we're working on middle housing um requirements to bring before the planning commission and council now um in the upcoming um next few months. And we'll be doing that and part of that conversation is going to include parking requirements, so we'll dive into that, I think we are gonna need to take a look at not only middle housing, but overall um, all of our parking requirements, so we'll be having a robust conversation of what that looks like across the community as a whole.
Thanks, Christie, that's really helpful and I guess I will just, I feel like I've said this in multiple places over my time on council on multiple um topics, but you know, at least from my perspective, like if there's an opportunity to understand and like consider whole pictures and whole, you know, kind of areas of, of decision versus, you know, kind of piecemealing things here and there. At least for me, I feel like that helps me come to, to a better understanding um that helps me make better decisions. So I guess in term, like, I think it's important we come back to this conversation and whether it's within forty-five days or the next several months, does it make sense to kind of slot in with the other work that's going on um in all of the spaces that I know it's going on, because it's a busy time. Um, I appreciate it and look forward to the conversation, so thank you.
Yeah, agreed, thank you, um, and, and to clarify, the reason I voted to table it or put it off for, for the discussion, not because I oppose the, the change necessarily, but it sounds like there's a need amongst the council to have further discussion on this topic and, and parking in general, so I, I appreciate the uh, the staff will be bringing that back to us at a future date and, and we'll look forward to a robust discussion on parking and uh, and how we address parking in the near future, so thank you. Thank you all for uh great participation in this uh hot topic. Um, and also thank you for uh Rich and, and Christie and everybody that put all the hard work into the Engineering Development Manual, I think that's gonna, it's a great uh, uh step forward for this, this community and a lot of uh heavy lifting that you guys did to get us here. And we appreciate all the work that you've done to uh, to, to get us where we are and look forward to uh continue to move forward with uh utilizing this new manual and, and the changes we've now made. So thank you, okay. With that, looks like we are ready to move on for a review and vote on an ordinance amending Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code uh for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission uh with Deputy City Manager Carolyn Hope, Carolyn, take it away.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Protem, Mayor, City Council, uh, we have a, a small adjustment to make to the ordinance for the DEI Commission based on uh council member input. And that is to broaden the definition and um the establishment and purpose of the commission. So we adjusted it to say that the one position slated for a student from high school could be a Mount Lake Terrace resident or Mount Lake Terrace High School student. And so that is the only change.
It hopefully is fairly straightforward, anybody understand, hopefully everybody understands that, but do we have any questions? Is that councilmember Ryan? Nope, you're good, anybody else, any questions, any discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance that updates the language in the municipal code section two point one five zero point zero one zero to reserve a seat on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for a Mount Lake Terrace resident in high school or a Mount Lake Terrace High School student.
Second.
Mayor Protem, you read that so well, I would, yes, so moved.
All right, I got a motion from uh councilmember Murray, do I have a second?
Second.
Jennifer, you got a, who seconded that, for the record? Councilmember Sonmore, councilmember Sonmore gets the, gets a second. Uh, all right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, uh, motion passes unanimously, congratulations, well done, thank you very much. Moving on to the review and vote on board and commission appointments, city manager Jeff Knighton, go ahead.
Good, thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, mayor, members of council, uh, the city council formed the DEI Commission in twenty twenty and that has seven positions. The council would like to modify the language to allow a resident of Mount Lake Terrace uh who is in high school or a student at Mount Lake Terrace High School uh to uh serve on the commission.
Point of order, we just adopted that motion?
Oh, I picked the wrong one, sorry. Got down to the end. So uh boards and commissions, my apologies. So uh, the uh, at the end of June, the board, several board and commission appointments will expire, two for the Arts Advisory Commission, uh, one for the Planning Commission and two commissions have existing vacancies, that's for the DEI Commission and for the Parks and Recreation and Park Advisory Commission. The council uh interviewed members, uh, or interviewed candidates rather, and has appointed the members you see as part of the memo. And those appointments would be effective July first, twenty twenty-four with the terms that are listed, uh, listed in the memo. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
And point of clarification, please note, it is the, the changes or the, the, what the interview committee is recommending is in the memo, not in the bill.
Correct.
The bill is the old, what we considered last year. So please ignore the bill and look at the memo. And that's what we will be looking to approve tonight. Councilmember Woodard, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First, I want to say, City Manager, I thought you were making a solstice joke, but you get that or you don't.
I was.
Right on, right on. That said, two questions about this specific topic. The first was, this fell out of my ear because I wanted to make sure that solstice joke was acknowledged. Crap. Well, the second question is going to be around just, I don't know what our process is. I think we've been at a point now where we've gone through a couple of cycles of picking council member, or excuse me, commissioners. And we have a small group to do that. And I don't know, are we revisiting that group? Or do we continue moving forward with that? That was a legitimate question. So I'll wait for that answer while I try to remember what my first question was.
Okay, so when we did the subcommittee to appoint, or to interview rather, board and commission candidates, we did reach out and ask if any council member was interested in participating on that, on that board other than the ones that had served in twenty twenty three. And the response, we didn't hear any, any folks that were interested in participating this year or any different council members that were interested in participating. So we went ahead with the same in the subcommittee. In the future, I think that the members that currently serve would be happy to pass that duty on to others if they would, if they'd like to do it.
Yeah, and I also was looking at that conversely, which is I didn't want them feeling locked in, especially now that these are taking till eleven o'clock at night, right? That's probably more than people bit, whatever the expression is, bit off more than you can chew. When it was smaller numbers, we were making it a little bit faster. So again, just making sure that people aren't locked in or folks who wanted to jump in. Because I really didn't remember how we moved forward. That said, the second question, which was my initial question, and I'm just going to say I got some feedback, so I'm going to ask it loosely, which is, we put in play the idea that and I think it's in essence, just keep it simple, term limits, that we have everybody come back and what's the word I'm looking for, reapply effectively. Are we finding that that has been a good decision or is that just adding to you all having to now be there till eleven o'clock at night? Because in essence, you know, I'm not going to call it a rubber stamp, but at the same time, if somebody wants to re-up, they want to re-up. And I know we made that decision as a council to put in this practice, but again, now we've got some data. And let's look at it. Is it getting the results that we were thinking or is it just making a much longer experience for everybody? Because again, at the end, you, you say, yes, you've been, we, you know, we, I don't know of anybody who has not made it through the interview process. There's a different way to say that, right? But just putting it out there, I'm saying, hey, we put these practices in place, do they still make sense? Because they are taxing the committee is my experience and the feedback I'm getting from the people going through the process.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard.
Addition.
Great questions. Yes, Councilmember Murray, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Happy to, I mean, speak a little bit to some of what Steve, or what Councilmember Woodard asked if that's all right, given I'm one of the subcommittee members.
Carry on.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, yeah, I think my general thoughts are, you know, I think they're, I would welcome if other folks are interested. And I think one of the things that might be helpful is to talk about the, who wants to serve on that committee as part of our annual appointment process for boards and liaison appointments. I think that that would probably be just a timely place to have that conversation each year. So we have those folks in place. And that way, whether it's as part of the annual process, which is later in the year, or when we have a vacancy. Sometimes there's a need to move more quickly and have a special process. And so would welcome that being part of that. If, and that way, it's just, we have the conversation every year and it's just part of that process. That might be helpful. My personal perspective, I'm, you know, I, I think, one, I think to your question about just like what's working well, what's not. I mean, it might be a good time actually for us to have that conversation a little bit more widely. But my general thoughts about the, the reappointment process is that it's working really well. You know, I think it's a good opportunity for those who are, you know, have been serving to have the opportunity to consider whether or not they would like to continue to serve. You know, what it does also, and we had actually a really good example last time we went through the process in, you know, opening it up and seeing other folks that are interested in serving. We had somebody who was an amazing contributor to their, their, you know, commission and who said, I have a lot of other things going on in my life and I see all of these other amazing commissioners, like, I, like, I'm actually not going to continue in the process and decided to withdraw their name from the process because, you know, they, they felt comfortable that there was other folks available, other great community members available to fill their shoes. And I do think sometimes those in volunteer roles stay because they worry that if they're not there, that the work might not get done and get done well. And so I think it's been a good process to show that there's a lot of interest and it helps us connect with folks in our community who whether or not they are ultimate appointment or not, you know, they are, you know, getting involved in the process oftentimes for the first time, having conversations with the city. And I know we've had lots of conversations as a subcommittee about how we, how we plug people into different places because we do have a lot of amazing community members. So anyway, I guess my, my perspective is there's been a lot of value as much as it has, it does increase the amount of time. I think it's a valuable step on, on both sides and gets us good results in many different ways. So. And I guess as long as I'm talking, I just, I'm grateful to all of the really amazing residents who raised their hand as part of this process. I think I said that when this came up at our work session, but I will say it again since we are voting on it tonight. We have really amazing residents and time in and time out when we go through these application processes. You know, we see folks who both we know and are consistent contributors, showing up and volunteering in our community. And we meet new folks and learn their stories. And I mean, we have so many like smart, thoughtful, you know, just wonderful community members. And so it is always a hard decision to figure out whose names to nominate and vote forward to you. But I feel really good about the slate that we are proposing here to council tonight, really excited about both the reappointments, the new commissioners. And also really excited to find ways for those who we did not have the ability to appoint to a board or a commission this time around to find other opportunities for them to, to connect and serve the community in a way that, that resonates with them. So with that, I'll be quiet. Thanks.
Actually, Councilmember Murray, while you have the floor, would you like to make a motion to approve the city council subcommittee's recommendation as presented?
We didn't do that. That's where I'm at today. Um, yes, I move that we, sorry, let me, I move is there an actual like specific? I move to approve the city council subcommittee's recommendation as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Somer, seconds. All right, any further discussion on this topic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our council members that went through all the nominations, read them all, interviewed them and went till eleven at night. And I do look at eleven at night as, not as a, let's hurry up and pick someone, but I look at dedication to your position and you stuck with it. And I know we have families and want to get home by ten and you stuck there till eleven. So I want to commemorate you and thank you very much for working hard on this for everybody in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving the city council subcommittee's recommendation as presented, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. I, I, I will also follow up on Councilmember Murray's comments. We have, we have an outstanding group of, of citizens, residents that, that want to get involved and participate in our community in whatever way they can. And, and we're so thankful for everyone that, that put their name forward. And we do look forward, we, we, we had some hard, hard, hard decisions. We made the best choices we felt we could, but, or and, and we look forward to those that we were not able to find a position for this time, getting you involved in many other ways. I think the Community Ambassador Program is a great place to put everybody that's interested in getting involved, everybody that put their names forward. There, there's a place for you there. We'd love to have you involved in our Community Ambassador Program that we're going to be getting started with soon. You'll be hearing more about that. There are other positions as well. And we look forward to having folks involved in a number of different capacities. Councilmember Somer.
What is the ambassador program that you're talking about? I don't know if it's been mentioned to everybody yet or in person, I should say, or during a council meeting. Maybe we'll talk about it later because it's almost ten o'clock and we'll have to, we still have some other issues on there.
Right. Yeah, no, and that's a great, great question that I know we all look forward to having further discussion on. Jeff and Carolyn have talked about it in the past and starting a, a city one oh one program and, and being able to incorporate people that want to get involved in the community, learning about the community, getting involved. And then being able to tap those folks and others to, to be, to be our ambassadors in many ways on behalf of the city to work with and talk with and be involved with and engaging the rest of the community in any number of different capacities. I think that is, but as, that, but there has been no further discussion or definition behind that at this point. And I know that I'm looking forward to, and I hope everybody else is looking forward to having that discussion and getting that some sort of a program underway. Jeff, did that kind of sufficiently cover? Do you have any further input on that? Mute, unmute? There you go.
Sorry about that. So we're looking at ways to incorporate a program like that. And when we have the available capacity with our current, with the current folks we have, we will start that program. We do have an outline and what we want to accomplish and how we want to do it.
Oh, for, for this council to approve. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, there will be further discussion on that. I, I only bring it up now because I'm just so excited about the group of residents that, that have put their names forward and want to assure them that we've got a place for you here in our city. We're going to find, find ways to get you engaged and involved and put you, put you to work in, 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 in our city. And we've got plenty of activities and roles and things for you to do. So don't go away. All right. With that, all right, we move now to the city managers' report.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem, Mayor and Mayor and members of council. Keep it short here so we can not have a motion to extend past ten. So we have wanted to mention that we had over three hundred participants at the Civic Center, Civic Campus on, for the Juneteenth event. It was a great partnership and a great turnout. Very happy to see that. Andrew Applewig played a very important role as part of that event. And we're thankful for his work with the city. We are planning to participate in the upcoming tour to Terrace. And we'll have in the parade and in the street fair. So we'll have a booth. We have sixty six striping underway this week and getting that done here pretty, pretty quickly. So that'll be fully complete. And on the embedded social worker, as you know, we have a temporary arrangement with the Snohomish County Scout Program and our partners in Lynnwood. And we're looking to make that permanent over the next couple of months. And we will share that on social media after council sees the full program and approves that, of course. So lastly, well, not lastly, we've been getting positive feedback about our public works crews. We got a great note from a member of the community who let our public works team know about a pothole in the morning. And by that afternoon, it was fixed. And that's great. We love to hear the good things. That's, that's fantastic. And lastly, there was a youth hockey team that worked on the dog park recently and volunteered to do that work. And we thought that was great and we appreciate them quite a bit. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, City Manager. And do we have any questions of the City Manager? And his report? If not, we'll go into council liaison reports. We'll start with Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Last Tuesday, I had a meeting with the, as the liaison for the Arts Commission, where we're still submitting artwork for the Arts of the Terrace Show, which will be happening in September. And people can apply up to the end of August sixteenth for submissions. And it is, some people still aren't quite sure what a juried art show is. That means it's judged. So you just don't get your art in. You have to be judged. Kind of like if you want to play with the Seattle Symphony, you're, you're judged to go in. So it's a judging thing. And same with most of the art shows around the area, including which just finished the Edmunds Art Show. So thank you. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's see, on the tenth, I had the opportunity to visit the Lynnwood City Council again, where I was among a couple of other folks who received their Juneteenth proclamation. I thank them again for that honor. On the twelfth, I wasn't sure to include this one, but I will, which is, I work in a number of different boards. And one in particular is Foundation for Edmunds School District. And as of this month, I am now the president of the Board of Trustees for the Foundation for Edmunds School District. And I pause actually to give credit and appreciation for our former city manager who first brought this to my attention. And timing is everything. I was with a different organization at the time, so I did not join the foundation, but he planted that seed. And so here I am, just a handful of years later of joining now, sitting at a very crucial time. One of the things we're doing is trying our best to save the arts. And you know, I want to pause and just, just point out to folks, what you think is interesting, artists are the true truth tellers. So when we are taking out the arts in the school, you're effectively ruining the pathway for truth tellers. And no one ever talks about that. We just talk about, oh, we need this cut or we need this reality. But the reality is, again, artists are the truth tellers. And when you take that out from such a young age, what a much longer road they're going to have towards truly getting at truth and pushing us to be better. Oh, moving on, the thirteenth, had the honor of attending Shoreline State of the City, a wonderful city address. On the thirteenth that evening, I joined us in study session. The next day, I had the city manager one on one, which I always appreciate those times. Thank you, sir. On the fifteenth, jumping back to Juneteenth, and you're going to hear a theme as I finish out my report. I had the honor of serving on one of the panels in the afternoon. I appreciated that. I never take for granted that people want to hear what you have to say. And it was just such a thoughtful afternoon. Folks who made the time to stick around, I really appreciated that. On the eighteenth, I had the honor of being invited to the Snohomish County main campus where I participated with the flag raising there at our county. Couple remarks were shared, great panel, just a wonderful opportunity. And I will tell you what I told them. And we may have to extend the ten o'clock, but to be fair, most of you were at home. And this is the most I've heard Councilmember Ryan talk in a long time. So you made sure that we got here to ten o'clock. So your drive home won't be that bad. Plus you and I could walk home. We know we live here in the city center, so teasing a little bit there. But I did want to point out that what a wonderful opportunity to put Mount Lake Terrace on, just for that moment in time, everyone's consciousness. And I pointed out to them, what we already know, which is we are, at least coming up from the south end, where that one little city is down there. We are the gateway as well as a destination city. So it was fair to ask us, well, what are you doing to make sure that Snohomish County is represented? If you're the first encounter that people will have, especially with that light rail station opening up on the thirtieth. And so I talked about the great work that we have done specifically around Juneteenth, since that was the word, the topic of the day. But I do want to say I was very proud to be able to stand there and know that I was talking about all of us and our city and the distance that we have come in a relatively short period of time, all things considered. Seventy plus year old city is actually very young. And so I'll finish this out by saying then on the actual nineteenth, couple of programs I was a part of, but the one I will share and adhere is that for Lynnwood, the reason they gave the proclamation is I keynoted their Juneteenth interaction. And there I will just say. interaction. And there I will just say, similarly, what I shared there is this idea around just get involved. There's always a reason to keep your head up and to dream bigger. And I put that back in some practical senses of how are you using this freedom that, that flag represents? How are you actually activating that in your personal life? And on that note, that's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. All right, Councilmember Sonmore.
I'll keep mine very short. I just want to say a shout out, and this is off my report for my committees. But a shout out to our fire staff and medics for Snohomish County. I know we had issues with looking at the price of everything, but all in all, I have to say our fire district serves us well. I recently talked to one of the medics and he was asking me about one of the neighbors. And I just, it, it brought that hometown feel back and that they're invested in our community and the people that live here. Also, Jennifer, today we were talking about Left One and Left One doesn't have fire anymore. So I think she called it Leo and I had a giggle about that, but I think we'll probably keep the name the same. So she was right, even though we're not paying for firefighters' claims anymore. And so with that, I think I have a meeting with the city manager next week. And I'm glad to hear about the social worker. And I've been driving on sixty-sixth and we're actually getting new lighting there. And I noticed some of the businesses around there are getting their businesses paved as well. But I have to say, it looks beautiful. It looks nice. I wish we could do more of that throughout the city, but I know how expensive it is. But they've done an excellent job there. And the last thing I just wanted to mention too, and I think Councilman Murray asked for it too. But if we could get a report out from the senior center, what activities they have, how are they getting people there, how things have changed? And just ask them to come back and give us a report out on what's going on with the senior center. And that's all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I'm coming to you live, not from home unfortunately, but from a hotel room in Vancouver, Washington, which is actually a very beautiful city. But so down here with some of our other colleagues at the Association for Washington City's Annual Conference. So I think I'll reflect on that next time after we finish the conference because we don't wrap up until tomorrow. And I've had a chance to reflect about lots of, you know, both learning opportunities in terms of direct sessions as well as networking opportunities to learn, you know, what's working in other communities. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to represent our city in terms of the voting as well as getting the opportunity to learn. I will say, I guess, so I was going to report and then I'm like, oh. But I will say it's, it's always a pleasure to be somewhere else and to have, you know, folks who are familiar with our community, elected officials from other communities nearby, share all of the positive things that they are hearing and seeing about our community. And so I just, I feel very proud to, to live in Mountain Lake Terrace and to represent our community. And I, you know, I, I hope, I will share some more of that, but I just, I was going to say, I, I'm very proud of the work that we are doing and it is not unnoticed by those around us. So actual things from the last couple of weeks. On the eleventh, I joined the Melody Hill and Cascade View Subarea Planning Workshop at Brighton School. I thought that was just a phenomenal event. We've talked a lot as a council about how important community engagement is to us. We've talked a lot about how do we drive community engagement, particularly around our comprehensive planning process to ensure that, you know, folks in our community and those who have not historically been involved in the process are more involved and have opportunities to engage. And I thought that there was a really impressive turnout for that type of event. And I loved that we held it offsite and kind of right in between those two neighborhoods and had the opportunity for both businesses as well as residents to come and share their feedback. And there was lots of, lots of good feedback shared, lots of note-taking and lots of conversations and connections being made. And so I just thought that was wonderful and kudos to the staff for all of their hard work making that happen. And there was delicious food. Oh, and so, and there was delicious free food as part of the process. And there was translators on site for folks. And there was like childcare in a cool corner with all sorts of neat activities for the kids who came. And people did bring some of their kids. I met one of our newest residents who'd only been here a couple of months and he brought his infant son. And it was just, I mean, I will say, I just, I'm, I'm super grateful for all of the intentionality and work that we are doing. And it is showing in terms of, you know, bringing new people into conversations who are excited, you know, to, to contribute to the community. And then there was, of course, lots of faces that we recognize and see regularly. And so it was a wonderful mix and an opportunity for all of them to come together and talk about the futures of their neighbors. On the twelfth, I don't usually talk about my kids stuff, but in terms of like being so excited about youth, and I am really excited about youth. And we've had opportunities to talk about amazing youth here and I'll reflect on that later. But, you know, we just had, you know, the opportunity to appoint our first, at least in my time on council, youth member of one of our boards and commissions. That's an ongoing border commission. I know we have started to test that water here with some of our advisory committees and really excited to take that next step with tonight's vote to, to appoint Patricia to the DEI Commission. But with that, I was going to say, I know that there's, you know, anyway, I, I, I think there's always, always negative, you know, I think connotations about some of the things going on with youth in the world. But I think there's also so much positive going on with, with our youth. And my daughter's school does a mock Congress event. And so I had the opportunity to go and join them for their mock Congress day and it was great. All of the kids wrote bills. And then they had to argue, you know, that why their bill should be passed. And then all of the other kids got to, you know, make points of inquiry and make amendments and, you know, go through the entire process of putting together and passing a bill. And these weren't fluffy bills. They were bills about like, really like meaningful thing. One of them was like raising the driving age. And I know it's 10 o'clock and somehow I'm always the one talking. I don't know if maybe that's a sign that I should talk less. But recognize that it's 10 o'clock and I should take a pause at a beat or it's almost 10 o'clock to probably extend our meeting for fifteen. Does that sound 10:15? Anybody feel moved?
I'll entertain your motion to extend the meeting for 15 minutes. Consider that a motion. Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have, that, that almost wasn't second. We could have just adjourned right there, right? No, we got a motion of second. I'll host a favor extending the meeting for 15 minutes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have extended the meeting for 15 minutes. Carry on, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you. I will try to be more brief. But anyway, I guess I just wanted to, like, I, I just, I'm so grateful for the, you know, teachers out there who are working important issues like that into curriculum and all of the kids who take it seriously. And I just, I'm, I'm excited about our future, both in Mountain Lake Terrace and everywhere. So. All right, that night we had our Terrace Talks event about public safety. I appreciated the opportunity for that. I was, I joined a little bit late because I was coming from an exciting recorder conference or recorder concert. But it was a good opportunity. I learned a lot more about particularly our domestic violence resources and appreciated the conversation there. On the thirteenth, I had my monthly city manager meeting. We had our work session. Reminder for folks, we moved this month's DEI Commission meeting. So it was scheduled for yesterday, which was Juneteenth. So we will be meeting this coming Monday, the 24th at seven o'clock at City Hall. So if folks want to join either live, online, or in person, that is going on. And with that, I will stop talking. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Murray. Council, Mayor Metzger right. You're up.
Thank you. So, my goodness. On the seventh of June, I, I attended the Linwood Light Rail pre-opening because we didn't get to ride anything. We just got to be on the platform. But we had a lot of people there. And then on the, eleventh, I also attended the Melody Hill Cascade View Subarea Planning at the Brighton School. Really great to see so many people come interested in their, in their neighbors. And then on the twelfth, I also attended the Terrace Talk. And then I also attended a Zoom meeting with Sound Transit to plan the opening day. Really interesting. On the thirteenth, I attended the Shoreline State of the City. And it was a great event, but I'm really glad that we had a great event too. And then on the, on the Saturday, the fifteenth, I attended our Mountain Lake Terrace Juneteenth event, which was amazing. And then on the, well, then on Tuesday, I came to Vancouver for the AWC Conference and we're leaving tomorrow. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Metzger right. All right, I'll be brief on my report so we can hopefully get out of here soon. On the thirteenth, I had the work study session. On the fifteenth, also dropped in on the DEI Juneteenth celebration that in Mountain Lake Terrace. I'm so pleased and proud of our community for putting that on and hosting that and look forward to having that for many years to come. Also attending the AWC Conference, I will not go into great detail about the great placemaking program that was presented during the general session and how important water features are to placemaking. I'll delay that conversation for the next time we talk about water features. And but I will say that, that art is a critical, critical component to placemaking as are water features. But public art is, is an important thing that we need to be considering and having further discussion on as we move forward in helping us establish Mountain Lake Terrace as a destination city and a place to be, a place to live and work and come visit and enjoy. There are lots of other great programs addressing all sorts of great topics. I won't go into detail with, on them now. But I'm looking for, you know, I always love attending these conferences because I come back with so many more great ideas for us to consider. Sorry, Jeff, but, but these are great, great programs. We learn a lot and get a lot of great ideas and hear from a lot of our counterparts around the state, some of the amazing things that they're doing. And look forward to sharing those further on those topics at another time during another discussion. But with that, I will wrap up mine and close out the council liaison reports and get us on to new business, any new business.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to thank the city manager for not only helping us with our Mountain Lake Terrace Fountain, but also going to all these AWC events and his own events that he's attending. So I really appreciate, appreciate it. I also appreciate our deputy city manager Carolyn Hope for filling in any emergencies that need to happen here. That's really great. And I'd like to thank the council members that are attending the AWC. I was unable to do that this year. Second, I'd like to thank Councilmember Woodard in mentioning arts in the schools and how that's important for students to have, besides just academics, but sports are important, but arts are very important also. And it's just sad that when you have like Marysville School District, minus 28 million in the hole and the OSPI setting up a financial oversight committee to take over the district. These things are going to be happening and I don't know what it is. I wish I knew. Seattle School District's 105 million in the hole. So we're really hoping the arts in the schools are keeping going. I know our school district really worked hard to keep some of our art programs here in the Edmund School District. So just mentioning that. Then the third thing I just wanted to mention is on Juneteenth, I took it upon myself to do some education on Juneteenth. I know a lot of people think, oh yeah, that's this, the Emancipation Proclamation and all that. But I, I don't think many people know that it's the Thirteenth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, and the Fifteenth Amendment. The Thirteenth Amendment was in 1865. The Fourteenth Amendment was 1868. And the Fifteenth Amendment was 1870. And that was to make sure everybody followed the Thirteenth and Fourteenth Amendment. So if you really want to know a little about history, go ahead and study Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and especially Fifteenth Amendment that forced the southern states to do the Emancipation Proclamation. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any further new business? Seeing none, I will be happy to adjourn our meeting and look forward to seeing you all back in town next week. Have a great weekend. Enjoy the ride and we'll see you soon. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.